Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Board of Trustees' Work Session Agenda. The date is March 22, 2022, and the time is 6:06 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And as per usual, we can rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, and just for all. So we can begin our meeting with the board presentations. There's a treasurer's report, so I'll turn this over to Charlene Cable-Bach, our village treasurer.
Thank you, Mayor. March treasurer's report is as follows. Revenue's our adopted budget of $32.2 million. We exceed $32.4 million, exceeding the budget revenue as of February 28. Revenues that are revenue drivers, utility tax. We exceeded our budget by $128,000. County Public Safety Sales Tax revenue, we exceeded our budget by $57,000. Building permits, as of February 28, we had to exceed $1.75 million, exceeding the $1.3 million budget by $454,000. And mortgage tax, $1.1 million we received, which exceeds the budget by $850,000, and that is only 5% of the year revenue collected. Two more quarters yet to come from the carry. Expenditures, we have the budget squirted again, $32.2 million in so far expense this year as of February 28, $25, just over $25 million, which is 77% of the budget, which is trending on course to remain on budget. Some expenditures that will be, we're expecting to have some budget amendments for going forward. As we discussed previously, we received an 11% increase in December on our New York State health insurance. So there probably going to be adjustments we'll have to make to tweak to get through. We have one more month left to pay for health insurance. So we're expecting that there might be some shortages that we might have to adjust at the next April meeting. Other items for the budget. The 2023 tentative budget is scheduled for public hearing on April 12 and an adoption scheduled to be adopted before the May 1 New York State deadline. We are currently implementing cashless transactions at Cooper's Beach in a year enough for beach season, which will start, we'll be selling tickets, beach permits beginning April 1. And we're going to implement first, this will be the first year we're going to try to implement phase one of our online beach permits. We're going to start with our business passes and more will be following that. We should have something to unveil at the April meeting. And that concludes treasurer's report.
All right, thank you, Charlene. Great news on the revenues received and the adopted budget. We're already ahead of schedule with a few months left to go. So that's, that's great news. And we're going to thank our building department for their hard work, making sure that they can fully exceed $1.75 million versus the $1.3 in the budget. Great news, $454,000 more than budgeted. Excellent. My question, this might be for Ken or for Charlene. I know we passed a local law on that thing of building properties. Do you know when that goes into effect? Or can you know?
I think Ken could probably will find on that when we file that with the Department of State.
That's correct. And, and I believe Kathy has already done that.
So they should be implemented as we speak.
Correct.
It's in front of the record then.
So it's as of the filing. So when it's filed, the local law becomes effective upon filing with the Department of State. And you pass the local law and file it with the Department of State, so.
Correct. And, and my history over the last year, Kathy is pretty efficient with getting that filed up in, up in Albany. So I would say they're in effect.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move to the communications to the board. There is a single correspondence from Val Davis and Jay Fitzpatrick. And Charlene, I'll let you summarize that for the board. We all have that in our packets, yes. And I believe it's also on the village website as well.
Correct. We did receive an email from Mr. Davis and Fitzpatrick. They are actually requesting that this become part of the record. There's several photos and aerial views of Glasskey Street. And to sum up, they are requesting that the no parking for the six signs that are on Glasskey Street, existing no parking signs that are currently from 12 AM to 6 AM be extended to, you know, to extend it to 6 PM to 6 AM. So basically, they're requesting that we extend the timeframe for no parking on Glasskey Street, which is in the vicinity of 2:30. And they did have some photos here, so I guess we should consider if that's something that we would want to change in the code to respect the parking photo.
Okay, thank you very much, Jay and Val. We will take that to consideration. Now, I just wanted to make a quick announcement and just do a second communication to the board. This is the Southampton Village Conference of Master Plan. I'll probably say this again at the comment from board members. But we need your help. There's the final public workshop. That will be in person at the Southampton Cultural Center, 25 Pond Lane, Saturday, March 26, from 10 AM to 12 PM. Please do RSVP. This would also send to everyone's homes. And then on top of that, there is a film on Friday evening at the Rogers Memorial Library at the Morris Meeting Room called One Big Home. It's a film screening followed by a conversation with Director Thomas Benner. And that will be March 25 at 7 PM. So that is the second communication to the board that way. So this meeting, I think, is on the briefer side. We'll move to our suggested resolutions.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, you said that was an in-person meeting. I think it's a hybrid meeting. I think it's also available by Zoom. Correct me if I'm wrong. Charlene?
We could set it up as we're, we could set it up.
Not over Zoom, but it will be streamed on the YouTube channel.
Okay.
And but the work breakout groups are filmed, so just the presentation, five-person, two-person. So people should come in person.
So it'll be live stream.
So again, live stream, but it is an in-person meeting. But anyone who would like to watch it, they watch it. But again, there'll be some breakout groups, and those breakout groups will have minutes on those. But those breakout groups will not be recorded on Zoom. Those are again, small five-person breakout groups. And that will likely rotate. We had these breakout groups when we had our Zoom meeting earlier in the con-plan calendar. So Ken, thank you very much for the, the update there. So we'll move unless there's anything else from board members. We'll move to suggested resolution. And Charlene, I'll let you take it from here.
Right, resolution number one. Resolve claims for the warrant dated March 22, 2022, for $128,234, and the expense warrant is 14, general fund, and $41,890 warrant each case, capital fund, be ordered and approved.
Make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Quick, quick discussion. Sometimes in the past, we would go through some of the larger ticket items. So there's a couple I wanted to have some questions on. You know, there's Island Tech Services for $2,909. Was wondering.
That is a new tool that is renewing the security, service security of the fire department. It's an annual maintenance that they have.
Okay, excellent. And then there's Trius Inc. for $1,275.
Yes, that is for Central Garage.
Okay.
Or the care points.
Okay, thank you very much. Didn't see those ones. I don't see any other questions or comments from board members.
And just to clarify, there is a $410,000 capital expenditure at Rosenbauer, Minnesota. That is actually the property unit that the board approved in July 2021 for fire department from their capital reserve to the resolution at the July 20 meeting. And that is how long it took us to get the truck, fire truck. So we came to go now, almost a year later. So everything was on backorder. So that was approved by the board, you know, 10 months, nine months ago.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay, so on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution number two, resolve the minutes, reading of the minutes for the public session March 10, 22 is suspended within the minutes or accepted, filed by the votes for it. And the year taken at that meeting are due by ratifying the proof. Share a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Aye.
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 Resolution number three, the board trustees approve the extension of the outdoor dining for upcoming 2022 spring summer sessions. Excuse me, sorry. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Whereas the Peter, resolution number four, whereas the Peter Marino Art Foundation has requested permission from the board trustees to display the upcoming sign placement along your 11th and 22th upcoming, remain for October 2022. Now therefore be resolved for the people to approve the Peter Marino Art Foundation to display their art banners for the upcoming event on the exterior of the gallery. Is there, and I did include in the packet, and I think it's online, which is, so it would look like the renderings. So if anybody has any questions, you know, motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
And then we just want to thank trustee Robin Brown. She's done a lot of work with the Peter Marino Art Foundation. This is going to look beautiful this upcoming summer. And Robin has done much more than this. She's really been a great liaison for the foundation and to culture in the arts. So thank you for your artwork with Peter Marino and helping to beautify the village. So thank you, trustee Brown.
My pleasure, thank you.
Aye.
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 Resolution number five, resolve that the board trustees approve an annual stipend in the amount of $8,000 to a random weather for the addition of D's assumed as the secret fix coordinator. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Second.
First of all, I was not made aware of this. Change, I didn't want you to know how it came about and what the, that dispatch has been handling this so far. I'm curious, you know, why, why does it take months to roll?
Charlene, maybe can I hand this off to you and then I'll show her a couple of.
Well, I believe that it's not just dispatch. I think that the implementation, she manages the software. She's the administrator of the software. She's also actually reaching out to many people with different items going on. So it's really, she's really managing the entire site. And I think this was, you know, something that we had to step early on and we were waiting until the program was up and running and making sure it was a step before we decide.
And will this bring our vote confirmation?
Yes, Miranda goes above and beyond, and she works outside of her normal working hours. Many evenings, many early mornings arranging meetings and following through with not only the, the village staff, but also with outside, with the residents as well. And she's doing a spectacular job with this.
I think it's totally.
So it's not $8,000, so roughly 10, whoever, please answer it. And so I, because I was not made aware of this, because as in any, I don't feel comfortable moving on this tonight. Maybe we can pay for this, or I will just, no, because I don't, I was not aware of this. And again, I dispatch, I know most of my calls go to dispatch. So again, I'm not quite sure what's going on here with Miranda being involved. But the board doesn't claim for the grades that is there effective.
I'll make a couple of comments here. And you can see if you'll have a motion to table this. But before that motion to table, I just wanted to say a few things. To echo what Charlene said, Miranda not only implemented the system, customized and designed the software, but she rolled this out to the entire community. And then she spends beyond her nine-to-four position, helping administer this on a daily basis. Making sure that all of the requests are rolled out. We handled well over, I believe, 300 cases, if those, that number is actually identified on the app. If you were to go out to a private company and ask them to design and implement and roll out an app, they'd probably charge you upwards of $50,000, maybe more, especially in this economy with inflation the way it is. So I actually think that $8,000 to ask her to do a job, that would probably, anyone else would probably charge us upwards of $50,000 is a bargain. Now, the other thing that I would say is that Miranda has also been in close communication with Mayor Sander and one of the trustees, the village of North Haven, who liked this so much that they would like to implement it. And they might actually need to hire a full-time person to do this. So this is just a very good deal for the village. And I think that it's actually unfair to dismiss and minimize the amount of work that she not only does on this particular project, but for the village in general. I will also say that I can firsthand knowledge that Miranda, again, goes above and beyond. The typical job of a mayor's assistant is to shovel at nine and leave at four o'clock on the dock. Miranda does not do that. She'll be here at seven o'clock at the screening. She's often at work till eight, nine, 10 o'clock at night. She works the weekend in, in order to live in Southampton Village. She actually has a second job working at a restaurant. So I don't think it's, it's, it's fair to, again, minimize her work. I would actually want to take this step further and say that she's actually going above and beyond her civil service description as secretary of mayor to get a promotion to assistant to the mayor. Because really, if you look at all the work that she does, all the projects that she's managed, she has just elevated disposition to a, a, a higher level. And I think she's doing a job that is well above what her job description actually says.
Mayor, may I jump in here? If, if, if the board wants to reevaluate any personnel matters or positions, I don't think it's appropriate to do it during a public hearing. But if, if the village is looking to create a new position and look for valid candidates, I think we should do that, and that's completely appropriate. I just don't think a board meeting at this time to identify what the village's needs are for personnel purposes is an appropriate time to do that.
All right, thank you very much, Ken. I'm, I'm good here. I just wanted to make sure that the public knew what, again, the cost would be and, and the fact that we have, you know, personnel here that go above and beyond. And I personally really appreciate Miranda's hard work. And I can tell you, we make a lot of those residents happy with our level of service today.
Yes, ma'am, I want to say, I do not question Miranda's work ethic. She worked quite hard. My only question was, I, again, was not made aware of the change. I also was, was, I also was under the impression that dispatch handled the majority of these complaints. And also, it's the second pay raise in less than two years. So again, I'm not saying no, I'm saying we, I, I want to, we value this at another time, especially once we complete our investigation of the, yeah, the, the, coming up. So I'm not pressing management, we're getting, I think you worked a great job. However, you know, again, I was not made aware of this. And so I saw the agenda yesterday. So, and you want to move forward, feel free, but I also have a topic at this time.
Are there any other comments from the board?
I would like to make the comment, I'm not going to go into politics, but we will advise. But we will all advise, because of the discussion that was said some time ago, several months ago. And also, the protocol is that things are listed on the agenda that's given to us that, at least 24 hours, where at that time, you certainly can't pick up the phone and speak to any trustee or so forth. And there was a formal discussion, and it was advised in the proper timeframe. And I do want to say, I just was on a meeting with the Environmental Committee, and they were just complimenting how easy the workflow is. People were quite satisfied with his path because now coded resources are there within 20 minutes. So the cost, as a overall engineer of designing this, not just the manpower, of money. Yes, you change our dispatches or answering the calls, but this is definitely something different. And I think in all areas, you need to stay within the protocol, which we've done in 24 hours. And thank you.
Yeah, I was not made aware of this, and so I saw the agenda. Making the public aware of that discussion. Anyway, I'm so amongst the board, I'm not questioning anybody. I'm just saying, I, as a trustee, have not, was not made aware of this. The communication goes away, the man wanted to make a, wanted to say to give Miranda this, I didn't give it to them. So if they call me, and that had not happened. So anyway, I don't want to waste any more time. Now, if you want to move forward, feel free.
Yeah, there was a, was there a motion to table or?
Almost in table.
Second, on the motion to table. The motion, yeah. So on the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And want to vote?
Respectfully opposed.
The motion carried. Resolution number six, the board trustees approve, proposed submitted by Mayor King. You know, Friday, you know, Friday. For your second, 2022, this is adding cost on the $15,000 funded by public special projects. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Resolution number seven, the board trustees authorize the mayor's assignment after data of identity, allowing the village of Southampton to use municipal credit card processing agents for the new building department software of Iowa. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number eight, resolve that the board trustees approve a local government records management improvement fund grant, LGRMF 2022-23 grant application presented by Jen from Indiana with support of our initiative to digitize vital records within the local hall. The amount of the grant is an amount up, amounts would exceed $75,000. We are requesting a $31,000. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
One quick discussion, sorry, Charlene. I just wanted to thank you. I wanted to thank Kathy, Karen, and Mimi for their hard work on this, on this program here. The village of Southampton, the state lease is a little bit out of date. And I had us bringing some, some grant revenue so we can digitize the vital records and bring the village forward in 2022. So this is an outstanding project, and we wouldn't have this if it wasn't for our local view and our clerks and restaurant departments. And Jen Messina, who's done a nice job as our chairman.
Is it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution number nine, resolve that the board trustees approve the Southampton Union Free School District, West Hampton Union Free School District, Hampton Bay Union Free School District to hold a military recognition ceremony to recognize the property, approximately 12 graduating seniors committed to enlisting in armed services and serving our nation. The ceremony is planned to take place on Thursday, May 19, 2022, at 10 AM at Long Park in front of the World War One Memorial, Wednesday, May 25, 2022. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number 10, whereas AIM funding plays a pivotal role in funding essential municipal services such as water, sewer, public works, police, fire, and ambulance for cities villages across New York State. And whereas the state has not increased AIM funding in 13 years, and whereas inflation has eroded AIM funding by roughly 29% over that timeframe. And whereas the New York State Conference of Mayors and nearly 400 of its members have signed on to a letter to the governor requesting an inflationary increase of $210 million in AIM funding. And whereas the governor's executive budget proposed deep AIM funding flat. And whereas the New York State Senate and Assembly have included increases of $210 million and $150 million respectively, respectively to AIM funding on, in their one-house budget. Whereas an increase in AIM funding would reduce local tax burden and help revitalize communities across New York State. And now therefore be resolved that the village of Southampton urges Governor Hope to work with leaders of the state and assembly and increase AIM funding in the 2022-23 adopted state budget. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number 11, the board trustees of the Incorporated Village of Southampton and Washington Avenue Administrative, who we noticed, we did the public to notice this public hearing to be held April 12, 2022, at 6 PM as a hybrid split in-person Zoom meeting regarding local law 6-2022, the proposal for a man village goes to add a rental registry law, march this issue to implement the registry and permit process for village rental properties within the, within the village of Southampton and for using the building in the land department. The original notice of public hearing is scheduled for March 29 at 5 PM. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second, quick discussion. Will this be, will this be filed, I'm sorry, because I know there's some residents who have reached out to me regarding that legislation. And unfortunately, we didn't have any of us, when we passed the revolution, and we started this, as when it will be prepared for the public.
Well, I believe, Ken, can you, you're currently drafting that, that legislation, right?
Yes, this, this is the legislation concerning the.
Rental law.
The, the rental law? I've already drafted it and circulated it to the entire board, waiting for comment back from anybody. So it's been circulated, it's there.
So I understand the public, the public is on the website or, so, no, it's not on the website yet. The board hasn't finalized, we're kind of waiting for feedback from the board.
Okay.
But before this, before this is noticed in the paper, it'll be finalized, so. Thank you. We need board input. So.
Any, any board member should reach out to Ken with comments. As soon as we get those comments, we could distribute that to the public. There's a little bit of bandwidth as to what, but this can, again, I'll be, so it's more input we have from trustees, the better off.
Again, the public, because they tell you the rules they want, they will play it, so.
Thank you.
On the motion, all in favor?
Do we have an, do we anticipate that the, that the resolution that's presented, the public hearing, will be revised based on our, our input before the public hearing? Or are we going to be debating the same resolu, the same law that, that you've already created, Ken?
Well, the, the proposed law that's being presented to the public needs to be presented to the board of trustees at least five days in advance and made, and then made available to the public. If there are substantial changes in the, in the law based upon comments within the five days of the public hearing from the trustees, or there's substantial changes that the board is willing to consider based upon public comment at the board of trustees' public hearing, then it'll need to be redrafted, re-noticed for a public hearing and re-submitted to everybody. If the proposed changes are the minimis, minimal, I forgot to dot an i, I forgot to, you know, cross a t, those are not substantial, and you can amend it on the fly and adopt as appropriate. But, I mean, this is, this is an issue that, yes, if there's going to be any substantial comment, changes, it needs to be done in advance, and if it's not, you're going to have to re-notice it and republish it.
I, I've received substantial public comment upon the proposed law, and we'll be letting you know what, what I've heard. I'm sure all the other trustees will as well. And my sense is that we're going to have to. And my sense is that we're going to have to consider substantial revisions.
Okay, I, I just, I, I, I have forwarded it to the board and I haven't received any comments. So I'm, I'm unaware of those, um, inquiries or comments.
Okay, thank you.
So on the motion, uh, all in favor of the schedule of the public hearing?
Aye.
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 Resolution number twelve, whereas the village of Southampton was awarded a grant from the Southhampton Water Quality Protection Improvement Program in the amount of a hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars, and awarded a grant from the New York State D E C Water Quality Improvement Program in the amount of a hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars for the installation of the Jim Lee Bio Squail Project, and the grants for the project have been executed. And whereas the village has received proposals from South Fork Ashhole and H T C Land Station to each perform portions of the project, now therefore be resolved with the board trustees authorizes the mayor or his designated to execute the contract with both South Fork Ashhole and H T C Land Station to perform the work with this grant-funded project. Is there a motion? Make the motion. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number thirteen, the twenty twenty-one post that requirement points wishing for all volunteer ambulance department workers to the Southampton Village and volunteer ambulance department have met the required posting requirement and has been certified by the village ambulance department chief and are hereby approved. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Uh, we do have one supplemental, um, to be added on. I'd like to make a motion, a, a resolution to schedule the P V A annual Easter egg hunt in Agawam Park. Do we have a motion to add this resolution?
Oh, I agree.
And second. Favor of.
Aye.
Resolution, so resolution number fourteen, oh, fourteen. Uh, resolved, the board trustees approve the request from the Southampton Village Police and Network Association to host its annual Easter egg hunt at Agawam Park on Friday, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, during the hours of nine AM and eleven AM. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, uh, Charlene. So there are no mayoral appointments tonight, so we'll move forward with comments, uh, from board members. We'll begin with our deputy mayor, uh, trustee. Trustee Resta, we can move to trustee Brown. I know you're having some, uh, a little wifi, uh, difficulty, so, uh, we'll, uh, we'll move to, uh, trustee Brown. Thank you, uh, trustee Brown, uh, trustee McLaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, it's great to be, it's great to be back in a person hybrid, um, at least, and it's great to be, um, seeing faces. Um, it's, uh, to be on Zoom. I also want to echo the thoughts, um, about the, um, upcoming process with the, um, with the, um, that kind of thing. I, I, I hope all, uh, people there, and I hope you, I, for your input and your, and your comments. Um, there was a Zoom earlier in last fall, uh, well attended, but I hope, uh, in person will be just as, uh, um, attended. Also, uh, I have seen the film, uh, one behalf of the film by Thomas Pena, so, uh, those of whom that haven't seen it, it's a good, I'm seeing it, whatever, um, this Friday, uh, it's a good film, so I have, I have recommended. And, um, um, also, um, there's, um, there's going to be a, we, a press session on Thursday to discuss, uh, the future of the village, um, summer. So if there's tickets left, I would certainly encourage those, if there is, please, uh, attend. And with that, I will, we see you all at the next, um, meeting, we can now discuss the, the public hearings that were, uh, that had been mentioned about wind blowers, the rental law, I believe, the, there, the, was, oh, sorry, not the rental law, but the, um, what's the third one here, Charlene, um, about the, um, yes, I've seen it, I've seen it, um, wind blowers, uh, those are the two biggest topics. So we're going to see you all, and also be part of Hampton, so we're going to see you all, thank you.
Okay, thank you, trustee McLaughlin, uh, trustee Stevenson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'd like to just recognize the, uh, members of the, uh, Southampton Fire Department. A, a few days ago was, uh, St. Patrick's Day, and everybody in Southampton was Irish for that day. Uh, a few members of our fire department traveled to Dublin at the invitation of the Dublin Fire Department and participated in the St. Patrick's Day Parade in Dublin. And I've seen the pictures from that event, and it's great that our firemen represented Southampton so well. And I'm glad they had the experience of, uh, of, uh, walking down the street in Dublin with hundreds of thousands of people cheering. So that's, uh, hats off to them for, for organizing and participating in that wonderful event. I'd also like to, uh, thank our residents, our constituents for the constant feedback they provide. Uh, did hear what you are saying about the proposed rental law and some of the provisions. Uh, just like to insist that it's not the purpose of this board, or at least my purpose, to add additional governmental regulation and hassle to people. We just want to make it a safer place so that, uh, and a, and a cleaner place, and a, and have some control over, uh, the whole rental situation so that we know what's happening and, uh, and folks aren't taking advantage of the services that the village provides. Uh, so in any case, thank you for your comments, and we will, uh, pay attention to them and, uh, and create a, a resolution and a law that, that, that satisfies, uh, the wishes of the broad community. With that, thank you very much, uh, for your attention this evening.
Thank you, uh, trustee Stevenson. Uh, I will, uh, try to be on the briefer side. Uh, first, wanted to, well, by the way, I, I'll let, I'll be cheeky and know that I would welcome, uh, uh, to go to, uh, Ireland and to Dublin the next time, so I'm looking for an excuse to, to go. So I'll have to call them and let them know, uh, if I'm allowed to go, I'd happily march on St. Patrick's Day in Dublin. But in any case, uh, wanted to, uh, thank, uh, Thea Bride, uh, there was a resolution on, uh, night's agenda about the military recognition ceremony to recognize twelve graduating seniors enlisting in our armed services, serving our nation. And, uh, we'll have that at Agawam Park. Uh, Thea Bride does a lot, uh, to help support our veterans, and I wanted to thank her for that. A lot of times it goes unnoticed, but she's often times, uh, behind all the, uh, ceremonies at Agawam Park. She's doing other types of, uh, activities throughout the town of Southampton as well. And we're very lucky to have, uh, uh, Thea Bride, a member of our community, to help, uh, recognizing our veterans. Uh, I thanked her earlier, but, uh, again, we're going to thank our entire clerk's department, again, uh, Charlie as well. Um, and, uh, coupled that with, uh, Jen Messiano, we had a call today, uh, going all, going over all our C P F W Y P grants, uh, to which, uh, Jen is, uh, is behind them. And, uh, we have a, a whole list of, of, of water quality grants going to Southampton Town. So we're very excited about being able to present them. Uh, this is going to be a big ask. This is essentially, uh, two and a half years in the making. I mean, so finally, a lot of our hard work is coming to fruition, and that's going to be coupled with a, a village-wide water quality plan that we put together with, uh, Nelson's Open Boilies. We never had one before, but this is going to be an outstanding tool that we need in order to go and get these grants, because every time we apply for a grant, whether it's the D E C or the C P F, they always ask us, you know, where's your, uh, village water quality plan, and we never had one. Uh, so finally, uh, years later, it's done. We're, we're happy to have that, that plan in order. Uh, I'll let go of trustee McLaughlin's comments. Press session on Thursday. I was fortunate enough to be, um, involved in that, and so I'll be, uh, wearing two hats, one as a business owner and one as a elected official, but looking forward to the, uh, press newsroom, press session. And, uh, a few other, uh, things. On that note, uh, we're also very excited about the outdoor dining that we've extended. It's been a good program for businesses, so that's, uh, excellent. And then, uh, two other topics, just I wanted to bring up to the board, uh, just to let them digest a little bit. But, uh, we, we know about the eleven percent increase in the health insurance premiums. But the village, uh, we have been really unable to find a village-wide, uh, healthcare, uh, policy, or, uh, if we can identify one, it's likely going to be a very old. So I think it's time that our village look at these policies and determine, you know, whether or not they're still working for the village, and we can update them, because this could be something, uh, that could benefit, uh, future boards and the village to come. Uh, we, we long talk about the, um, hundred and fifteen million dollar plus of long-term liabilities. And, uh, you know, for example, when you go through our, our healthcare policy, you'll see, you know, people that have worked for the village, uh, not even full-time for two and a half years, and for whatever reason, you know, they're on our health insurance program. Or you've got, um, former, uh, village employees who are working for other, uh, municipalities, and they're also on our health insurance program. So we have to do what's best for our residents and taxpayers, so I, uh, would just like our board to start thinking about, about that. Um, and we'll probably find a few things that we can change that I think everybody would, would unanimously agree with. And then the second thing is, uh, we may want to look at also our procurement policies. Uh, we have our, uh, public hearing, uh, for our budget next month, but, uh, we haven't really made, uh, so many substantial changes to the procurement policy. And I think that this is something we can work together as a board to just look at. Uh, another time, we've made some small tweaks thanks to, uh, our friend, uh, Charlene. But I think we should maybe take this a step further and just evaluate whether the procurement policies are, are working for us and, uh, what can we do, uh, to improve that. And then finally, I'll, I'll do this one more time because we want to get everybody's help. It is really important that everyone attend, but we have our, uh, public meeting from ten AM to twelve PM for our comprehensive master plan. This is so important because for the next five to ten years, all of our zoning and planning and, uh, future development of our village really depends on this roadmap that we put forward. I see Mark Shiver, who's, uh, our co-chair of our planning commission, and he will be there. But, uh, this is something that, uh, I think is extremely important. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, uh, to executive session for the purpose of discussing contractual litigation and specific village personnel matters. Is there a second?
Mr. Mad, uh, trustee Resta, I see her back. Did she want to say something?
Thank you, trustee Stevenson. No, I'm good for tonight. Let's, uh, everybody, everybody mentions anything that I wanted to speak about this evening. Just to also echo, uh, what you said, though, I would, I will say that about the, uh, the rental laws. And we all listening, but it's all about, uh, knowing who, uh, is next door to you. And, uh, there's been many, many, uh, much concern about, um, uh, sanitation with people coming in and, uh, things like that. So it's really about having a little bit more control about who is in the village. So I just wanted to echo what you said about that, but thank you.
Right, thank you, uh, trustee Resta. Thank you, trustee Stevenson, for pointing that out. Again, I'll make that motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing contractual litigation and specific village personnel matters. See a second from trustee McLaughlin.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 First, I'll make a motion, uh, to return, uh, to, uh, public session. And, uh, part of that motion, let the record note that no action was taken during executive session.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to the meeting. There's a second.
Second.
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night.